Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the new year of 2023 and our regularly scheduled board meeting. We are honored and privileged to see you here tonight. Our first order on the agenda is to all of us arrive and give a pledge of allegiance. And I will lead you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated.
Review of the agenda?
Uh, thank you very much, Chair Johnson. Again, great to see everybody here tonight. Uh, and thanks for all the great board appreciation things here. Uh, in terms of review of the agenda, we do have a couple of just quick, uh, um, items. There's a, we did correct an incorrect location on the December minutes and also included the financial report. You will notice that at the end of your packet. Um, and no additional communication to the board needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Uh, next on our agenda tonight, we have, um, student leadership report. We are honored to have two students from Roseburg High School.
Um, so leadership is working really hard right now to build a spirit and culture. Um, this week we introduced something new. Um, we're calling it the Spirit Stick. And basically the Spirit Stick is like this decorated pole. And we are hiding it around campus and releasing these clues. And when students find it, they can bring it back to the classroom and they get a prize. The goal of this was to bring some culture and spirit and then to get people more familiar with our campus. We have also, um, been split up into different committees and we are working hard on the Arts Assembly, Prom, Senior Sunset, and Homegoing Week. Um, and leadership is currently collaborating with the Arts Department to put on the Arts Assembly.
Um, next up is School Land. Uh, FBLA is prepping for both testing events and presentations at regionals in Grants Pass on the 18th of February. Classes have moved out of the heritage into the modules and we are hearing of the new car smell all over campus. RHS is getting ready for finals. Hannah and I are partners for our Spanish oil, which we were prepping for before the meeting. Astros making Valentine cards for a local retirement home. The Orange R is working hard on their second print issue, which will come out in February as well as updating their website. The Orange R has made it into the second round of the First Amendment Press Freedom Award Competition. The Drama and Choir Programs are starting rehearsals for the Spring Play, Wednesday the Musical. There was a jazz band concert last night hosting Jolene and Fremont students in addition to performers at the college level. RHS alumni are up to a bunch of different things from Dr. Kareem Al Badri, who discovered a black hole while researching for postgraduate work at Harvard, to Bryant O'Grady, who played for the Marine Band at the National College Football Championship. The big news on campus this week has definitely been the announcement of Dr. Weber's transition to work at the District Office. Despite the fact that she'll be missed all over campus, we are very excited to see what she'll be able to do for our district off RHS campus.
Onto sports, uh, winter sports at RHS have been doing really great. Both girls and boys basketball started league play out of yesterday. Um, wrestling has a home duel tonight against Sheldon. Swim is preparing for the Rumbog Invite and has a homie on February 1st. Cheer has started competition season and will be hosting teams from all over the state for the Orange and Black Cheer Challenge on the 28th. Unified is practicing two times a week and is ready for their game during the halftime of the girls' basketball game on the 27th. Even though our athletes are busy with winter sports, spring sports are working really hard at preseason practices.
We are super grateful for our school board members, especially this month at a school board appreciation month. Students and teachers at RHS are just about ready for finals week. Thank you.
Excellent report. And for the record, we have Sylvia Eichmann and Hannah. Have a, thank you so much for your contribution to our meeting tonight. We will now, uh, honor our student and staff recognition. We will start out with the student. We've asked by Chair Larson to do the students and I'll do the staff.
Take this one.
We've got one over there. Okay.
Um, so when I call your name, if you want to come up with your family or teachers, whoever wants to join you, um, come and stand up here and face the people so they can see who they, who you are. Um, and then we will present you with an award. And when you're done, you can take a picture here or there's this really cool balloon arch. So you can pick which, where you want to picture. Um, and we'd like to get a picture for the Facebook page, so don't run away. All right, Dexter, I saw you come in with your dad. Where's Dexter and Paul? There they are. Come on up.
Dad and Dexter. Come on, Paul.
Um, Dexter is in seventh grade at Jolene Middle School. Um, Dexter is an all-around wonderful person and always brings maturity of thought and action. He is well-deserving of recognition. Teachers say Dexter is amazing and helpful and even sweeps one of his instructors' classrooms every day after school for free without being asked. Not even like a smarties or anything, just for free. He's a gifted writer, gives 100%, is kind and respectful and thinks outside the box. Dexter, who is known for his sense of humor, has been a great kid all year. Congratulations, Dexter. Hey. You aren't here or there? Right here? Okay, Howard, come up front with them. So you're not hiding behind the table. Way to go, Dexter. Um, Paige Peacock from Fremont Middle School. Come up, Paige. Mr. Ventias here, I saw. Come on up. With the family. Um, you had to face them. Paige, teachers say Paige is a fantastic student who comes to class every day, ready to work, and is always looking to help others any way she can. Paige is constantly asking questions and doing everything possible to improve and challenge herself more. Not only does she excel academically, but she is kind to her peers and makes those around her feel listened to and appreciated. She makes every classroom that she walks into a better place to learn. She's also known for playing a critical part in various extracurricular activities at Fremont, such as Advanced Band and Jazz Band. Congratulations, Paige. I failed to mention, we have McDonald's gift cards for these kids, which is pretty sweet. Paige, what instrument do you play? Yeah. Oh, nice. Very nice. Okay, Olivia Moore Walker. Come on up, Olivia. With your peoples. Your fan club. Olivia has been a student in Roseburg School District since kindergarten. Her teachers say she is a responsible student who embodies all parts of the pride matrix at Roseburg High School. Olivia is known for her positive attitude and is always respectful in her actions and comments to others. She sets a great example to everyone around her by working hard with a smile on her face. Olivia's favorite classes include World Language. Just this, which class? Wow, nice, two languages. And Psychology. And she enjoys participating on the RHS Track Team. After high school, she plans to Why? Zoe Pierce. Is Zoe here? Zoe is a fifth grader here at Hugh Crest. And Zoe has been a wonderful addition to the Hugh Crest family this year. She was immediately noticed for her respectful and kind behavior to everyone around her. She is consistently engaged in the classroom and always diligent with her work. Zoe genuinely cares about others and is often the first to offer help or support to someone in need. When classmates were asked to describe Zoe, the words were funny, enthusiastic, kind, caring, inclusive, and a great team member. Zoe has an outstanding character and Hugh Crest is so proud to call her a Hugh Crest Hawk. Congratulations, Zoe. They're going for the balloons. Mr. Ventia and Mrs. Opper like checking Zoe out. I don't know. I guess she's headed to Mrs. Opps School. Sorry. Sorry, Mr. Ventia.
Moving forward with the staff, uh, the first one is Representative from Hugh Crest Elementary, Irene Noy.
All right, well, I'll give that to you.
Allow me to share with you. Irene is known at Hugh Crest as an exceptional instructional leader with a vision, knowledge, and expertise to ensure that all children have an opportunity to grow. She works hard for her students and they absolutely love her. Irene is a building leader in the STEAM and TAG Program and worked diligently with staff in developing programs that meet the individual needs of every student. Along with her excellent rapport with staff, Irene does a wonderful job in seeking out ways to get parents and the community involved in the school. Her Crystal Apple inscription says, "Organized, intelligent, driven, effective, and passionate with kids." Congratulations, Irene. And, and next we're going to bring another Hugh Crest person up, Jason Buer.
There you go.
There we go. Thank you so much. Jason is knowledgeable, compassionate, and driven. He is a true advocate for all students and is committed to making students successful. By building positive connections with students, Jason helped them to feel safe, to feel good about themselves, and to make good choices. Hugh Crest students really dig him and appreciate what he does for them. He is enthusiastic about what he does, but he is patient and calm demeanor with students is contagious. Jason has also established an excellent rapport with the Hugh Crest staff, thanks to his flexibility, his willingness to collaborate, and thoughtful insights. As he is working on becoming a licensed teacher, it is our hope that he remain in the Roseberry School District. And his Crystal Apple award says, "Enthusiastic about his work, patient, and a calm demeanor that is contagious." Congratulations, Jason. Our next honoree tonight is Nutrition Service from Sunny Slope Elementary School, Maria Vayado. Thank you. Maria started working and serving the children of Roseberry School District 20 years ago. Maria started out as a substitute in the summer and soon found a love for the job. After subbing in the summer of 2004, she was hired as an assistant cook at Green, which soon led her to her current role of lead cook at Sunny Slope. Maria's compassion, love, and care for her school, students, and staff are unmatchable. Maria has been a valuable resource in training many new lead cooks and staff who have moved up in our organization. Nutritional Service Director Kyle Mecklin says, "He always enjoys spending time with Maria in her kitchen and seeing all the smiles she brings to students she serves." Her care and passion are traits we should all strive for in everything we do. And her Crystal Apple inscription says, "Reliable, loyal, compassionate, diligent." Congratulations, Maria. And we're going to honor another Nutritional Service person from Winchester Elementary. Kim Sermack. Kimberly started employment with the Roseberry School back in 2011 as an assistant cook at Hugh Crest Elementary. She quickly worked her way up to the ranks of lead cook, managing her own kitchen in the Melrose Elementary. Since being lead, lead cook at Melrose, Kim has also led the kitchens at Eastwood and now Winchester. Kim is organized and very fast and thorough with all tasks she starts and finishes. Kim has been a valuable resource over the years, training new and current staff, covering all schools that are short-staffed and in need of a helpful hand. Her smile and her energy is infectious, and we are proud to have her as a member of the Roseburg team. Her inscription reads, "Energetic, creative, flexible, helpful." Congratulations. Ladies and gentlemen, we have completed the fun stuff, not a work begins. For each of you that came out tonight to support your, your students and your staff and your workers, we are extremely grateful that you took the time out of your busy schedule to come be with us. We're going to take a short intermission so that if you'd like to leave now, you may feel free to do so. Thank you so much for coming and have a great year. Thank you so much. As we move forward, uh, we need the consent agenda.
I'm with the adoption of the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Are you ready for the question? Although the favors say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carried. We now going to enter into public participation. But before we allow our guest to speak, we are honored to have tonight the Mayor of Roseburg, a former employee of the Roseberry School District, Mr. Larry Rich. He's going to present a proclamation tonight.
Is it on? Is it on? Uh, yeah. Can you hear me?
We can't, but they can. We can too, but.
Oh. Oh, there. Okay. All right. Thanks. Uh, it's time for school board recognition. So it's January and every January is the time where we say thank you to our school board members for all the hard work that you do. Volunteer job, probably a lot of people don't even realize the time commitment, but it is huge. Uh, we know that in addition to just the school board meetings, you have committee meetings that you are responsible for. And we just want to tell you on behalf of the city of Roseburg, thank you for your service. We really appreciate that. And I can tell you, being a past employee of the Roseberry School District, we got the best high school in the state and we got the best school district in the state. So keep up the good work. I have a proclamation. I'm going to read it and then I'll present it to you, Howard. School Board Recognition Month, "Whereas the community of Roseburg relies on public education to ensure a prosperous quality of life and strong economic health for Roseburg. And whereas locally, elected boards fulfill leadership roles and serve as the conduit through which teachers, parents, businesses, and communities demonstrate the care, creativity, and support that lead to student achievement. And whereas public schools nurture and train diverse student populations to the best of their ability, whatever the resources, to give students the knowledge, skills, and opportunities they need to succeed. And whereas board members build the framework that makes it possible for education organizations to teach Oregon's children. And whereas the committed men and women who serve on the Roseberry School Board deserve recognition and thanks for their dedication to the education needs of the students of Roseburg. Now therefore, I, Larry Rich, Mayor of the City of Roseburg, do hereby proclaim January 2023 to be School Board Recognition Month. And can we give our school board members a nice round of applause?
Steve Howard, you should go up front maybe for.
Oh, you should not pitch. You don't, you gotta take pictures.
The board. There we go. Hang on a minute.
Dressed up with matching suspenders. And shoes.
On behalf of the board, I want to, uh, express my sincere thanks to the mayor for coming and giving us that proclamation. Uh, we do appreciate your extra effort. It is not a time for public participation. Uh, we have a time limit of 20 minutes. I've asked Assistant Superintendent Lee to coordinate this. Would you take over, please?
All right, each, um, public participant will have two minutes. It will be timed when the timer goes off. If you will, please wrap up your comments. If you would like to participate, you can, please come up to the microphone. When you do so, please state your full name. Um, and then those of you that are on Zoom, if you would like to participate, please use the raise your hand function. So if anyone would like to come up, please come on to the microphone.
Good evening. I too would like to thank you for your service. And, uh, I would like to voice my concerns about, I was reading over the, uh, supporting gender expansive students, uh, proclamation thing that guidance that came out on, uh, January 5th, 2023. And, uh, I would just like to voice my concern about parents not being involved in the loop. Uh, the children in public schools are mostly minors and such parents or guardians are responsible for their children and decisions concerning them. I object to page 14 where student is in control of information to the parents. I would object to withholding any information from the parents or guardian. We don't allow minors, children to enter contracts, go to war, drink alcohol, smoke, or many other life-altering decisions. So why would we allow them to consider gender expansive behavior without parental or guardian guidance? To me, these policies tend to push children to a life that uh, has higher risk associated with it. I find it disturbing that in the vocabulary words presented, there's not a word for people who deeply regret transitioning. Also, what is the number and percentage of, of, uh, bad, well, suicide is the words that I use. I didn't know who was in the audience. But there seems to be a higher evidence of, of that going on. And I just, uh, well, that was my concern that parents are kept out of the loop and I think they should be involved in the loop. Anyway, thank you for all your service.
What? Did he say? Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Okay, thank you.
We'll wait to get a good back. If there be no other speakers, on behalf of the board, we thank you for coming out and sharing your thoughts. We do appreciate it. We will now move into our agenda items. The first item up is to present the, and adopt the 2023 budget calendar in preparation for the 2324 budget. It is my honor to introduce Cheryl Northam, Director of Finance and Operations.
In your packet, you will find a budget calendar for the 2023-24 budget year. It meets, uh, all statute and criteria for meeting and notification. I'll take any questions you guys might have about that. I'll take any questions you guys might have about that proposed budget, or if you see a problem or a concern that you'd like us to change something.
I still moved that we approved the budget.
Calendar.
Of the budget calendar.
Budget committee may lose their mind.
But thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Now we can pass. But I don't have, well, actually I do have one question. I guess it's on April. When are we going to start recruiting? I believe we have vacancies, but you're not correct.
We do have, currently have two vacancies. And so, and actually Janet's reached out to two members that have terms that run through 2023. And so we are currently working on making sure we have a full group and that. And I know we've talked to some people in the community that are interested in joining that. So we're hoping to get emails to me and for the community listening and people at large and interest on that. If you reside in our school district, send me an email. And can we bring those names forward to the board for approval if we have more than one per open position?
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Are you ready for the question? All those in favor of approving the budget calendar, say aye. Any opposed? Let me share with Director Northam that this budget that will be put together will fall in sync with our strategic plan that we have the board worked on. And that will be the driving nucleus to put this budget together in 2324 year. When you don't have a plan, you plan to fail. But we got a plan. We want to succeed. Next item is the, an update on the student investment account and superintendent, assistant superintendent needs.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. I'm, Dr. Weber, do you mind turning the TVs so a little bit so the audience can see as soon as I get the proper thing on there for them to see? Thank you. Will it move? I don't know. I just, just wanted to make sure that people could possibly see. If not, you can take my word for it. And the board, you have the slides in your packet. And so every January, we since the passage of the Student Success Act, we are required to provide an update to the board on where we are with our student investment account for the current school year. So this is an update on the 2223 school year. So our current school year. And just as a reminder, and the purposes of this student investment account are to meet students' mental and behavioral health needs and to increase academic achievement for students, including and students that are economically disadvantaged, disadvantaged, students with disabilities, students who are English language learners, students who are foster children, and students who are homeless. There are four strategies in our SIA plan that all of everything that we do is tied to these strategies. The first strategy is to create a culture of safety and respect for all students and support and adults. And the second strategy is to ensure instructional materials and tasks are appropriately challenging and supportive for all students. The third strategy is to establish systems and interventions to identify and remove barriers to graduation for all students. And strategy for ensure educators and families have the tools to support academic success for every student. There we go. And our SIA plan investments. So our final SIA grant for the 2223 school year These fall into four categories, class size, well-rounded education, instructional time, and health and safety. Our SIA plan investments for this school year include purchasing books to continue to grow our PK 12 classroom libraries. This is the third year that we've provided funding to add books to our classrooms. We are paying for three special education teachers, eight special education instructional assistants, and four elementary teachers to reduce class sizes. In addition, we have six middle school teachers to expand elective and CTE options for our middle school students. Two middle school TOSs. We are purchasing the ERLA, the Independent Reading Level Assessment, for eight elementary schools. This is our second year of implementation of the ERLA. And bring it in. Then also we have funding to ensure access to before and after school programs, electives, and extracurricular activities for all students. This is the funding that has eliminated all fees for our students, so they no longer have to pay for sports or to participate in classes. And we've eliminated those due to this funding. In addition, we've had a social emotional learning coordinator, which is Ms. Mindy Indicott. And we are paying for two school psychologists, 10 skills trainers, eight elementary and two middle school, four elementary STEAM teachers, the materials for STEAM team, two elementary music teachers, which ensures that every one of our elementary schools has a full-time music teacher. One high school health and wellness teacher, and then we are also paying for the Juvenile Justice Diversion Online Program to support our students in the secondary. Are there any questions from the board regarding our current investments? Yes, Andrew.
And skill trainers.
So there, the skills trainers are assigned, we now have one in each elementary school and they, and one in each middle school, and they are there to assist with behavior. And so they work with students, they may do behavior lessons with small groups of students. They walk around and provide assistance in classrooms with students. If a student's having a difficult day, they'll take that student for a walk, providing to behavior support and instruction to help students in the classroom. And just an update for the board, and this is the last year of our current SIA plan. This ODE has moved to what's called the Integrated Guidance, Integrated Guidance. It will be combining SIA, High School Success, our Perkins Grant, and our early intervention system into one application. The intent was to make things streamline things, but it seems that we're repeating the same six different things into one thing now. But anyway, we, in March, I will be bringing forward our new application to you. We are waiting for the allocation. So we will talk about that when that comes forward. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you very much for your information for the board. This is not a action item. It is a report. I want to thank Assistant Superintendent Nee for her passion and her diligence to bring us timely accurate data for our inspection and review. Thank you so much. It's now time for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Can you let me share a screen here? Very good. Okay. Thank you. All right, board. Let's see, I have a short report for you. This works here. There you go. Just a few things this evening to share with the board. First of all, you've heard about this today. And I just want to say thank you to Nutrition Services, Kyle Leeve already. I think you did, and our Hugh Press staff are, were helping us kick off our school board appreciation and recognition month. I talked about this a little bit last, last month, but these are some here, I'll share with you and you'll see in your packet there a couple of words. And these words come out of both policy and practice on things that school boards do. They, they really have key work as we know, and within our schools and community around setting a vision, setting a standard, accountability, alignment, culture, and really building, helping to direct a strong educational program and outcomes for our kids. And was talked about tonight. I appreciate the comments tonight. Mayor Rich talked about that inextricable link between a healthy community and healthy schools. And so again, thank you for the work and the stability that you provide our community and continue to provide our community. Thank you for what you do. And again, was mentioned tonight, you know this because you live this. I often have people say, so like, how much do you pay board members? And I think there's a general misconception about what the rule is. You volunteer, you dedicate time, you have things you probably could certainly and should be doing. But I appreciate your working with each one of you. You really are community gems. I really appreciate the effort you put into supporting our kids and our, our schools and staff. So thank you. I want to give a quick update tonight too on where we're at with some of our safety and security items several months ago. Really, at the failure of the last bond, I, at the board's direction, we've worked hard to follow the board's directives about moving forward on securing our schools. And I want to give you a quick update tonight where we're at on our vestibules. And again, vestibules are intended to be a space that's welcoming, but also demands that people check in and that we can welcome them, but make sure that we're able to ensure that those who are around our kids are both welcomed, but also screened, if you will, in a, in a, in a way that architecture can help us do. There's a picture of the, what will be the Fremont vestibule. So things are in the construction and procurement side of things still at more of a low than I would expect, but safety and security items, as we continue to see school violence across the country have really become relatively the back orders on school related items like glass and doors and those kind of items are several they're in hot, in high demand, particularly with some of the Esra dollars and that grant funding. We're not finished yet on some of these projects. In fact, we're still getting started. And we're working with our contractors who have received many, almost all of the materials. We do hope that, we do expect Fremont that has one header up is all right now, the construction to start and be finished by the end of February. That'll be our first vestibule. That's an easier one because we're in, within a self-contained shell at the entrance of Fremont. We expect to have, we have some ordering benefits of the Fremont ordering has allowed us to get materials in for Joane as well. We will be starting in March, the contractual for Joe Lane's project. It's a little bit different, similar to Fremont, but there's a few details in that that need us to do a couple of different things with the layout at that school because there's a counseling office to the left as you walk in. It's a little bit different transaction window there. But again, architectural drawings are done, contractors are on board, and we hope that that will be finished over spring break. By March, we'll have vestibules in both our middle schools. In terms of where we're at with the other schools, we're working with a local architect, Paul Bentley, and Paul has a quite a background in, in this work specifically in safety and schools. From an architectural design standpoint, what we've done is bundled our programs, the next four projects, if you will, not programs, the next four projects are Roseburg High School, Winchester Eastwood and Fair Grove. Those are still in the conceptual phase, but moving toward architectural bid ready documents. And that process is moving forward and we're hopeful to have that work completed this summer. Our final six buildings, we're going to shift toward architectural renderings on those, hopefully in the next month or so, and we'll be working next school year to get those completed. And I'll take any questions here in just a minute. And then was mentioned tonight, is, is the board's aware, just want to welcome Dr. Weber. She's here tonight. Thank you at most of our board meetings. We're excited about her appointment. Grateful that she can serve all schools. There's been a buzz, it was just talked about by the students tonight, but also around our school community and our community at large about Jill's passion for kids, her understanding of systems development, how to support all buildings. And I was in an elementary principal meeting a day or two ago. There's excitement about Jill's expertise being scaled out across our school. So welcome, Dr. Weber. We're excited to have you on board. And in terms of next steps, we will post the position for the high school next week. It will post on the 17th. Our staff will be involved in that. And I anticipate a recommendation coming to the board on a hire at the work session meeting in February. And so we'll have a consent agenda for that where that can happen and we'll keep the board apprised of that progress there and, and involvement with that. So welcome, Dr. Weber. And that is my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the superintendent? Comments? Seeing none. As we recognize the board for the activity this month, I want to recognize you for doing a job well done. It is now time for our director report that we were talking with Director Bishop. Thank you very much. Director Cotton?
I'd like to congratulate Jill. Been together a long time in this district and good things happen to good people, smart people. So it's, it's going to be great. And Michelle, thank you for report. I would hate to see where we would be. Especially come out of COVID if we didn't have this extra resources to do what we're doing. You've done a great job. And your team. Thank you.
Thank you, Director K, Director Crimms?
Just wanted to also thank Michelle for for really working hard on that, on the development of the strategy that you know, how to disperse those funds. I think that we've been careful with the money that's been given. I just appreciate the way it's been distributed in real needy areas. And also had, had the opportunity to attend a legislative session for the Department of Education up in Salem and had a chance to sit in on that and see kind of what policies may be coming down the pike and, and that was very informative for me. Also, our curriculum and instruction committee, there's some, some good things happening there. We're going to be adopting some policy or I mean, some curriculum for math coming up and there'll be more information on that next month, but some kind of exciting new ventures in that area. And I think most of the people here in, in our district will, will approve of them. So thank you for, for that, Michelle. Awesome.
Director Lee?
I've sort of enjoyed the holiday season, fewer meetings. It's made me, I always like the record show. I really appreciate whoever named the red wooden.
Director Shirkli?
I'd like to also congratulate Dr. Weber on her appointment.
Director Larson? Thank you. On behalf of the directors, we thank each of you for coming out tonight. We appreciate your, giving your time to help us do the accountability for the district. Our next board meeting will be a work session that will be held on January 25th, and it will be held in the administrative office at the boardroom starting at six o'clock. You may be able to attend via Zoom. If there be no other business before the board tonight, I hereby call the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.